All right, I'd like to call this meeting of Cleveland Heights City Council to order. Thank you all. Eddie, would you call the roll?
Cobb, Kuta, Larson, Maddox, Russell, Petrus, Posh.
Here. All right, Councilman Petrus is in Pittsburgh and he is also on Zoom.
Well, we're trying to get him.
Well, he's almost. Any amendments to the agenda? I don't believe so. We're going to just keep going through the agenda here. Approval of the minutes, we have February 3rd, February 18th, and February 24th. Any amendments to those minutes? Okay, that's good. You know what, I need my glasses. Trying to get through this one. All right, next we have one of my favorite things of all time, our student update, and I'm going to call Jayla Scruggs to the podium and to speak right into the microphone, and thank you for being here tonight.
Of course.
Jayla is not only giving us the update, she is my intern. I so appreciate you, Jayla. So what's going on in CHUH schools?
All right, so good evening to all the council members and mayor Serene. My name is Jayla Scruggs and I am an 11th grader at Hite High, and I'm also a member of the superintendent's cadre, and I'm here to give a report about what's happening at Cleveland Heights High School. Also with this group, I was introduced to Mr. Kuta, who I began interning with and learning many things about Cleveland Heights City Council. I am honored to be here this evening, and I thank you all for the opportunity. First, I would like to tell you all a little bit about our athletic teams and provide an update about several upcoming events at Cleveland Heights High School. The Hite High Track Program recently received, recently held the 41st annual Winart Relays, April 3rd through the 5th, and total Hite High hosted over 80 track teams in over the three days. We are extremely grateful to the coaches, parents, and volunteers who helped make this event incredible. The baseball team is currently 2-0 in the Greater Cleveland Conference. The program is excited about new leadership under varsity head coach Mike Lynch. Softball's participation is at an all-time high this year, with 36 joining the scene. Heights is very excited about the future of the program with so many young players joining. Girls lacrosse just picked up a big win this week with a 17-2 win over our next-door neighbor and rival Shaker Heights. Boys lacrosse also had a big win this week with an 8-4 win over Keystone High School. This marked the first win under head coach Brendan O'Malley. Boys tennis is very excited to welcome new head coach and Hite High parent Lawrence Smith as the leader of the boys tennis program. And thanks to new Cleveland Heights High School art teacher Matt Munson, he helped start a rugby club. Interest and participation has grown quickly in the first year, and we look forward to the program growing in years to come. Girls flag football continues to grow with 15 girls participating on the varsity team. There has been a big push by the NFL and Cleveland Browns to grow the sport. We look forward to it becoming an OHSAA sanctioned sport in the very near future. Here are a few important events that are happening at Cleveland Heights High School in the month of April. OST testing has been taking place at Hite High through the month of April. The Algebra I and Geometry tests will take place on April 23rd and 24th, while the Biology test will be administered on April 28th and 29th. In preparation for these tests, Hite High held a pep rally to encourage students to do their best on their upcoming tests and remind them of effective test-taking strategies. Heights High School is excited to announce that 58 sophomores and juniors were inducted into the National Honor Society this school year. That celebration took place April 9th. The opening night of the Creative Heights District Art Show took place on April 15th at the Lee Road Library. The annual showcase features student artwork from all seven elementary schools, both middle schools, and multiple classes at Hite High. The show is free and open to the community, and who can enjoy the artistic talent of Cleveland Heights University High students through May 10th. The Hite High Drama Club will present Agatha Christie's Murder on the Now on April 24th through the 26th at 7:00 PM in the Mini Auditorium. On April 25th, Metro Health's Youth Advisory Council will hold a Fall in Love with Mental Health event for 3:00 to 6:00 PM in the Hite High cafeteria. This event is free, and community members of all ages are welcome to attend to raise mental health awareness and receive free hygiene products. Here are a few updates about what's happening at Hite High in May. The IMD will conclude their year with a spring finale concerts on May 1st at 2:00 and 7:00 PM in the main auditorium. On Tuesday, May 6th, singers will be recognized for their scholastic achievements and will receive free scholarships from the community and Heights Schools Foundation at the Annual Singer Scholarship and Awards Night. The IMD's Jazz Night will take place on May 9th at 7:00 PM and will feature performances by the Hite High Jazz Ensemble, various student-led jazz combos, and the Roxborough Middle School Band. And last, the VMD invites the community to their spring concert on May 16th at 7:00 PM. The finale concert will feature singer solos and small group performances in addition to their usual performing groups. This concert will feature a fun mix of pop music and classic chorus. A mission is $5 at the door, and cash or checks will be accepted. For more information on all of these activities, please visit chuh.org, and I thank you all for your time.
Oh, great. Thank you, Jayla. Wait, wait, don't leave. Jayla, make up. I have to ask the two questions that are on my mind. Remind me what activities, student activities, you're involved in?
So I'm involved, one, in Superintendent's Cadre, which is a group of selected students who speak with the superintendent once a month to just speak about what issues we feel like Cleveland Heights High School is facing. I'm also involved in M10, which is short for Minority Student Achievement Network, where I get to learn about what minorities in Heights could do to, I guess, help us come together and better our high school experience. And I'm also a volleyball player. I've been on varsity for three years, so I'm excited to start that back in the summer.
That's great. And tell me how you're, so, you know, coming like almost the end of April now, you can start seeing yourself as a senior now, right?
Yes, yes.
How does that feel?
It feels very exciting and also gives me the motivation to just to push throughout the last two months of the school year and just look forward to all the exciting stuff that next year will bring.
That's great. All right, well, thank you again.
Yes, thank you.
Next, we have Brady Dindia, who's going to speak about, oh, no, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Brady. I didn't, I gotta read my own writing here. We're going to honor the poet laureate, the new poet laureate, and the outgoing poet laureate. And so, oh, and so we have Steve Presser coming up to start the festivities. He comes bearing gifts.
I always come bearing gifts, but the kind I usually bury, you guys don't want to have. Okay, so I'm here to, today we're going to celebrate National Poetry Month and recognize the services outgoing laureate Ciara Freeman, and welcome the incoming laureate, Michelle Smith. This is a special celebration of our laureate ship program, which happens to be the longest running in the state of Ohio, and it's also National Poetry Month. Heights Arts is celebrating 25 years this year, and our poet laureate program is celebrating 20. Ciara Freeman holds the added distinction of becoming our very first Heights poet laureate, having added the city of University Heights along with Cleveland Heights in the mix, just as we were choosing our next laureate. In accepting this position, Ciara also signed on for a new role with both she and we at Heights Arts had not experienced before, a brave endeavor. It was certainly bumpy as we navigated this new relationship with both cities, as we expanded not only the geography, but the role into more official relationship with both governments and communities. Thank you, Ciara, who unfortunately cannot be here tonight, for your openness, your creative energy, and your work, and willingness to go on this journey with us over the last two years. On behalf of the board and the staff of Heights Arts, I want to express how grateful we are, and for paving the way for new laureates to maintain this role moving forward. You have been an inspiration to all of us. Ciara texted me the following. Let them know it was an honor to serve them, and I will be sending the mayor a letter and a poem for the city in thanks. She continued. Michelle, you're going to do an amazing, and lots of As, and lots of Z's, and lots of N's, and lots of G's, exclamation points, superlative. You're going to do an amazing job. The award from Heights Arts is a custom-designed sculpture by artist Missy Perlock, who captures Ciara perfectly, as Ciara is known for her creating a poet tree. So I'm going to show you the award that Ciara received. Oh, there's a tree. Should we do a poet tree? I love puns. Many thanks for Ciara, but now it's time to talk about our 12th poet laureate. And I'm going to read this, because I just met Michelle the other night when she was doing a fracsacy at Heights, and she is delightful. That's the word tonight. By the way, you weren't delightful. And delightful is a very positive word in my mind. So, okay. Heights Arts is excited to announce Michelle Smith as the 12th Heights poet laureate. Smith, a poet and a literary advocate, was selected by the Heights Rights Community Team from a pool of highly qualified applicants. She will begin her two-year term in April of 2025, representing the cities of Cleveland Heights, University Heights, and Heights Arts. Smith is known for her creativity and advocacy in the arts. As the creator, producer, and director of Blacks Museum, an annual performance showcase celebrating notable black figures in American history and culture, she has demonstrated a deep commitment to cultural storytelling and artistic innovation. Smith is also the author of Ariel and Black: Guide to Culture Press, and will soon release The Real Jazz Wives of the 20th Century America. In her role as poet laureate, Smith will work to foster community engagement with poetry. She will host public readings, workshops, and other events, bringing poetry to a broader audience across the Heights communities. Additionally, Smith will lead Heights Arts' Fracsacy Series, which is a wonderful, wonderful series that engages the public, but more importantly, it's artists and poets who come together to create this kind of great dynamic. So try to come see Fracsacy at Heights. And I'm truly honored to serve as Heights poet laureate and look forward to a wonderful two years of connecting with the communities, said Smith. The Heights poet laureate program is the longest-running laureate ship in Ohio, established through a partnership between Heights Arts and the city of Cleveland Heights and University Heights. Local officials have expressed their excitement about Smith's appointment. University Heights Mayor Michael Brennan said, "We are thrilled to support the arts, and adding poetry to our city's cultural events has been an inspiration for our residents." Cleveland Heights Council President Toni Kuta echoed this sentiment, stating, "The Heights poet laureate program is a cherished tradition that makes our community unique and special." And now, Michelle, knock their socks off like you always do.
First, I want to thank you all for having me. It's an honor. He mentioned when he read my bio that I do a showcase every Black History Month called Blacks Museum. I got inspired from my daughter. I don't know if other people's kids do the Wax Museum, where they dress up, and they sort of range them around the classroom, and you go around and they pretend to be this famous person. And as a person who has a bunch of friends who are artists, I thought this would be an amazing way to sort of bring history to life. So every month, a bunch of my friends get together at Twinsburg Public Library and at East Cleveland Public Library, and we pick a person, each of us, that we want to pay tribute to in Black history. And then through whatever art form, we wish monologues, poetry, music, song, dance, we pay tribute. I'm a poet, so typically I do a poem, and this is the poem that I did this February for Blacks, and it is a tribute to Fannie Lou Hamer, and it's called Testimonial. Threaded throughout this are some quotes of hers, so you might hear some words that you've heard before. Every red stripe in that flag represents the Black band's blood that has been shed. Look now, don't you see it? It's the lives of your fathers and their fathers dripping slow, messy, from the points of those sheriff stars like guilt. I look at that flag. In my Mississippi self, I can't see anything but the cost of the cloth. I am back home in Montgomery County, skin burnt, back bent, picking, sweating, humming. I am mud-stuck, ankles deep, in a low-down Delta trench. Oh, my Lord. A cotton row is the closest breathing thing to a coffin. In the swelter of Jim Crow's Fall Mississippi was a cemetery masquerading as a 25-cent postcard. A mud plain, mud pie seasoned with the salt teeth of so many dead Negroes. And I was a true-blood daughter, a low county welfare case. My mama and daddy were sharecroppers, broke as Lincoln's 10-point promise. Couldn't afford but one dream for all 20 kids. They only wanted us tough, didn't dare imagine free. Thank you, Lord. I tumbled out and into the World War of 1917. Number 20 of 20 were seeing eyes, breathing lungs, two legs, two arms, big hands, able to bear the stab of cotton buds by six. I asked my mama once, why weren't we white? She never told me, but my Mississippi self read and learned. Yes, Lord. Our people are the Black Knight coming down like summer hurricane, ending the dog days of these hateful, bloated bosses. I left school and thought that I would die, gone away from books. I married pap and got hitched like a mule to the plantation. I admired in my love and hatred for Mississippi, feeding life into my mouth with this one fist, pounding it straight out my ass with the other. The man will shoot you in the face in Mississippi, and you turn around, he'll shoot you in the back. Any of you out there ever heard of a Mississippi appendectomy? Well, your girl Fanny has. It's when you say, "Go on ahead, take the tumor," and then butcher sneak and steal your womb. Help me, Lord. They took my babies, so I ain't have shit else to lose. When my boys, the famous Jameses, finally arrived in town, when they asked for those to raise their hands who go down to the courthouse, I raised mine, had it up high as I could get it. They were beautiful, brave, preaching civil rights, answering all the white man's wrong. They lit me on fire. The SNCC, the SCLC, and suddenly, I burned with wanting something even more than my own land. I was gonna win the vote for me and every other Negro in the U.S. Praise the Lord. I was only 44, but sick and tired of being sick and tired. The police met me at the door of every pole. They bust my eye, my kidney, my leg, but still, I didn't stop. I wasn't ever gonna stop, 'cause nobody's free until everybody's free, whether you have a PhD or no D, whether you're for Morehouse or no house. We are in this bag together, my people. Bless us, oh, Lord. I had never heard until 1962 that Black people could register and vote. That day, I questioned America. I said, "Is this the land of the free and the home of the brave?" And I knew there wasn't anybody braver or more deserving to be free than my people, Black people, from Mississippi up to Michigan and over to Massachusetts. So I fought. I never forgot where I came from or the bridges that carried me over. Christ was a revolutionary person out where it was happening. That's what God is all about, where I got my strength from. I thank you, Lord, for making me a woman who could wash on through like the mighty river, a true-blood daughter, heart on fire, two legs, two arms, big hands, enough to push my people toward a free Black future, and keep on pushing. Amen.
I always think it's, Michelle, I, first of all, welcome, and we're really so glad to have you. I think it's always so important to know when these people lived, you know, because then you have a context for those words. You know, her being born in 1917, she did live 60 years to 1977, and think of those changes that happened. Isn't that, I mean, that's so incredible. And, you know, like, she only lived 10, 15 years with civil rights, you know, not even just that last, like, decade of her life or so. So really incredible. Anybody else want to make a comment? I don't want to, okay, please.
I want to thank you for that. Fannie Lou Hamer is one of my favorite. I have a friend, actually, who does the Fannie Lou Hamer story, and she actually acts it out. And when you start reading that, it just brought that back to me, how she used to come to Cleveland, and she used to perform and do the Fannie Lou Hamer story. So when I get an opportunity, leave your card, and I'm going to get you in touch with her. I think she would be a real great inspiration to you. You're welcome.
Just want to say welcome and thank you for your voice and your gift. It's a blessing to have you, and I'm looking forward to the next two years and all that you're going to pour into this city. And so, thank you.
And I also want to say thanks to Ciara Freeman. She was just an absolute delight and always, you know, showed up at anything we asked her to. So I want to certainly recognize her as well. Now, we're going to move on to get some, like, updates on the former Coventry Peace Campus tenants, and we have Brady Dindia to do that for us. Kind of a where are they now? And while we're waiting, Jayla, if you have homework, you don't have to stay.
Okay, I got it. I haven't done a PowerPoint presentation in a long time. Well, good evening, members of council. Good evening, mayor, everyone here. My name is Brady Dindia, and tonight I am here on behalf of Coventry Peace, the nonprofit that used to be located in the former Coventry Elementary School, and sort of helped head up a partnership of several nonprofits that were located in that building. I've been asked to come here tonight and give you a little bit of an update. It's been quite a year that we've had. A lot of changes happened. I don't want to dwell on a lot of the past, and I do want to talk a bit about where we are now and our future. Most of you are quite familiar with how things played out over the last year, beginning in May of 2024. And we are now almost, I think, pretty close to exactly one year since the tenants were basically told that the building was going to be closing for use as a nonprofit center, and that we were going to have to leave the building. It was, I guess, late spring, early summer, that a new group was formed, which was called Keep the Peace. You guys became very familiar with that group. We advocated with all our heart to try and find a resolution to the matter at hand and find a path forward that would have helped keep the tenants in place and the building in use as a permanent arts education center. And I believe it was in the fall, city council also sort of became involved with urging the library to find a path forward that would work for all stakeholders. And it was somewhere around that point that the library just sort of basically made up their mind that they were definitely closing the building, potentially they were going to look at other uses or demolition, and our efforts to try and stay in this building came to an end. So as of January 31st of 2025, 11 out of the 12 tenants that were located in the building had left the building. There was one tenant that remained and is still there, who was a newer tenant who has a lease that runs through, I believe, December of this year. So as of December of this year, I believe, that's when the building will officially be fully mothballed and no longer used for any tenant use. So you have a few more details for those of you who need refreshers in the handouts I gave you, more details. I don't want to dwell on that. I want to look to where we are now. We had, as I mentioned, there were 12 nonprofits total, one of which we are not sure what they ended up doing, but we do have updated information for you on 11 of the nonprofits. Some have relocated locally. That includes Lakery Inc., who relocated to the Cedar Taylor neighborhood. If you haven't been to their new space yet, please invite yourself over there. It's really wonderful what they've done. It feels very good. It's not as big as the space they once had, but it's a very positive space, and I think they're very excited about everything that's going on in that district and the potential that they have to do even more while they're there. Cleveland Heights Teachers Union also relocated locally to the Cedar Fairmount District. Unfortunately, a few relocated further away. We were really sad to lose Dance Cleveland. Dance Cleveland was originally, I don't even know what year, 40s, 50s, or 60s, was originally formed here in Cleveland Heights by a group of women here in Cleveland Heights. Then it went, I think, to City of Cleveland for a while, Shaker Square for a while, then came back to Cleveland Heights. But they have found a new home at the Pivot Center in Cleveland, which is actually probably a fantastic fit for them, and we do wish them the best. And we are all staying in touch, and we hope to bring them back here for special events like our Peace Pops. Another organization that moved into City of Cleveland was Building Bridges Arts Collaborative, and along with them, one of the Artful artists known as Pickup Sticks also went with them to downtown Cleveland. Some of our organizations have gone remote temporarily. Future Heights is one of those. Future Heights just recently hired a new executive director. They're working remotely, but they are still searching for a new location. Grace Communion has also gone remote for the time being and continues their search for a new location. Others have gone remote permanently. That is, oh, I'm sorry, I'm behind here. Who went permanently? Sorry, let me look at my notes. Oh, I had it. Thank you. There it is. Yes, Reaching Heights. Reaching Heights has gone remote permanently, and I don't believe there are any plans to change that that I've heard of as of now.
Can you remind, I forgot what Grace Communion does.
They were the small church that was located over in the corner, kind of by where Robin Van Leer was. They were the volunteers that you would often see at Peace Pops who provided popcorn and cookies, and they had their pop-up day in the park every year. Small congregation, wonderful people. So then others have yet to secure their new locations. Singers Club of Cleveland is using space here in Cleveland Heights at Church of the Savior for their rehearsals, but I know that they are continuing to search for a permanent location. Part of the reason is they have an extensive music library that they want to make available to the public at some point. That was one of their goals at the Coventry Peace Building. They hope to find a location, I believe, where they can make that happen. Artful, flipping my hat for a second, Artful is currently in negotiations to purchase the former St. Albans Church on Euclid Heights Boulevard. It's not a done deal, nothing signed on the dotted line, so I don't want to get ahead of ourselves, but we, everything's looking very good, and we're very hopeful that this will happen sooner rather than later. and we're very hopeful that this will happen sooner rather than later. Coventry Peace will join Artful at that building if that all comes together. But unfortunately, Robin Van Leer will not be able to come with Artful. The new building space is just not conducive to the scale of the work that she works in and the amount of space she needs to store the materials she needs to create those large pieces. And then finally, there are, as I said, there's one tenant that remains in the building through the end of December, that's Do Good Day Hub. I do not know if they have begun looking for a new location yet, but I'm sure they will be soon. Robin was granted an extension by the library, which we were grateful for. She has had to move her space to a smaller space in the part of the building they have kept open and storing her stuff. But she will be able to continue to work there through, I believe, the end of summer. And she continues to search for a permanent location. She has not been able to find one yet here in Cleveland Heights, so her search has been expanded. And Artful has some, Artful also is grateful to the library that they worked with us and we negotiated a rental deal in order to store our materials until we can get into our new space. A lot has happened over the last year, as I mentioned at the beginning. Some of the negative consequences that we have observed were, of course, the loss of the benefit of being co-located together. And the result was that several of our businesses left Cleveland Heights. Multiple public events have had to be canceled, like Art for the Masses, Art of Community, two of our Peace Pops so far. All of our nonprofits have had to relocate pretty much to individual locations, no longer as a group. And the locations are smaller, so we do not have the capacity to host as large of events as we used to. And of course, there was, what I believe is temporary, just a bit of a hit to the reputations of the library through this. But I believe, we all believe in the library. It is a great organization and we support them wholeheartedly. We will work to put this all past us and look to better futures. The good news, I like good news. Good news is that none of the nonprofits had to close permanently, at least as of right now. As I said, Artful's on the verge of purchasing a building, which will allow them to remain in Cleveland Heights long-term. And the best news of all, Peace Pops is coming back in July. We are very excited to be partnering with the Cleveland Heights Recreation Center to bring Peace Pops back to Cleveland Heights this summer. We've learned a lot. Namely, we've learned that the residents of Cleveland Heights and University Heights do want a permanent arts, culture and education hub that houses local nonprofits and benefits the community at large. We also learned that success requires healthy public-private partnerships that are rooted in trust and that a similar model to the Coventry Peace Campus plan can be successful when the right partners are involved. We do believe that there's a peaceful future ahead of all of us. And the top priority right now for us is to get Artful settled into St. Albans, get Coventry Peace then into that building, and then to work together with City of Cleveland Heights, University Heights, to ensure that, that this can all come together and we can start providing a arts, culture hub through Artful, at least for now, for the area. Once Artful is able to install a sprinkler system, we can start bringing events like Art for the Masses, Peace Pops, back to that location. Those events, if you're not aware, just those three events that I listed brought thousands of people to Cleveland Heights over the course of the year. In the meantime, Coventry Peace is going to work in collaboration with partners like Lake Erie, Inc., Future Heights, Grace Communion, Artful, to bring Peace Pops and Lantern Festival back this year. As I said, we will be doing our first Peace Pops of the year. I think we're going to do two. Our first one will be in July at the Cleveland Heights Rec Center. They have been gracious to give us space to host it there. We should have settled on a date, probably by the end of this week. So I will get back in touch with you to let you know when that's going to be. And of course, we think we're going to combine our second Peace Pops together with the Lantern Festival in December. Those details will be forthcoming over the next few months. And then lastly, we want to continue our work towards establishing a permanent arts, culture and education center that can house local nonprofits. We will continue to build on new relationships, like the one we've developed with Ryan over there, working on Severance. And of course, most importantly, we will work on our longstanding partners like you, the mayor in University Heights, our other nonprofits. And we will hopefully work together to develop a plan that will bring this idea to fruition in a responsible, thoughtful way. So finally, I just want to say I'm so grateful, me, I'm saying I, we, are all so grateful for the support and encouragement you guys gave us over the last year. As I said, it was a difficult year, but there was a lot of good that has come out of it. And I know that our relationships with the city are much stronger than they were even a year ago. And we look forward to working with you for many years to come. And if you have any questions, just let me know. You know where to find me.
Yes, go. Okay, Jim Petrus has his hand up.
Thank you. Brady, I'd just like to thank you for your leadership and for your relentless support for the arts and nonprofits here in Cleveland Heights. So, thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Appreciate that.
And thank you, Jim, for showing up on Sundays and...
And moving walls and furniture. Thank you for that.
Brady, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we do have Ryan Porter from Impact. Tell us about Severance and the latest with, with that redevelopment plan. All the way from Long Island.
I can get this up.
Don't hold that against me.
I admire your willing to travel, willingness.
Why is yours not going full screen?
Thank you. All right. All right. All right, thank you for having me back this evening, members of the council, mayor, members of the public. I'm excited to be here. I've been working with you all for about 10 months now. So it kind of went faster than I wanted it to, to be honest with you, because there's just so much to get done. But we've made some great progress. So tonight, I just want to give you an update on kind of where we're at, walk through some conceptual plans that we've been kicking around, and, you know, talk about next steps, basically. So in December slash January, we finished up our Recommended Action Plan, which was, as you all, if you recall, know, was the first step of our process, right? So we spent six to nine months working on learning things from the community, reviewing old plans, learning about infrastructure issues or infrastructure opportunities with the site. There was a whole residential market analysis study done. So all of that was kind of combined into what we consider our action plan for the next steps. And that RAP, or Recommended Action Plan, was finalized and was published on the city's website and on our new website just at the beginning of this year. I did give some summary of a presentation on that at Noble Library, because that was kind of the next public meeting that occurred right after that was publicized. And I met with some of the council members to talk a little bit about it individually. But, you know, open to talk about that at any time with anybody, anybody in the public. When you read it or take a look at it, if you have any questions on the RAP, my contact information, I'm fully available whenever and anytime. But there was a lot of good information garnered off of that RAP. A couple of the highlights were kind of on the infrastructure side, some of the sewer discoveries that we made as far as kind of trying to determine where we may or may not have sewer challenges. We did discover a challenge that will come eventually to some of the collection system that, you know, as in most of these communities, collection systems are 100-year-old clay pipes. You know, it's all of these, the infrastructure across this country is, is, is old in a lot of places, especially places that have been established for quite some time. So we'll have to tackle that as part of this project. But, you know, the, the goal here is to, as we develop our conceptual plans, is to kind of narrow in on some of these challenges that we're going to face, whether that be a road challenge or sewer challenge or a school challenge or a traffic challenge, so that we can develop mitigations for them over time, right? Because this is a very long-term, long effort, this project, right? It took, I don't know, 30 years for the mall to fall apart. The new revitalized Severance Town Center is not going to happen overnight. And we're going to have to work really hard to make sure that over time, as we develop, that we mitigate the issues that come up naturally when you, when you do bring in new development. The residential market analysis kind of talked to, you know, to the demand that exists. So, you know, did a full study on everything from affordable demand to market rate demand, from rentals to for-sale housing, different typologies, all different user groups. I really encourage folks to check that out. If you have, you know, the time, it's posted on the city's website. It is a very well-done, in-depth study that was commissioned. And it talks about kind of the demand for housing that exists in the community over the next five years, basically. We then in turn did some retail analysis, which you'll find in the RAP. You can't really read it on the screen right now. But basically, what we do is we take the existing demand for retail for the existing residents of Cleveland Heights. We look at what the projections are for new residential that could be absorbed on the site and we add in that new demand that those residents would bring for retail, right? And then we come up with sales leakage analysis. So how much of, you know, home furnishings could be purchased by the existing and new residents of Cleveland Heights? How much is currently being purchased, right? And determine how much of that sales is actually going to other communities, right? So are people shopping for home furnishings outside of Cleveland Heights? And if so, how much of that can we expect to capture here in Cleveland Heights? So we do those analyses on all the major retail categories to determine how much retail we think is actually absorbable in the near and long term as we develop Severance out. Because the last thing people want is a bunch of empty retail spaces, right? And we also have to look at how does that retail interact, which I've been doing, with the existing main streets that you have here in Cleveland Heights, right? So how is, you know, Coventry and Cedar Fairmount and all these areas that have existing retail space? How is the retail that we're going to work towards going to interact with them and not cannibalize that, right? Or expand that, expand on things that are working, right? So a lot of that is part of the work that we've been doing. Public spaces, so obviously, this community is extremely active, you know, from a walkability, you know, bikeability perspective. So looking at how public spaces will be designed over time and kind of thinking about how that interacts with any conceptual planning and any development that will occur. So a lot of those things were discussed throughout the RAP document. Financing, so like, we started building huge lists of financing sources, whether those be public financing sources or private financing sources. I act as the, you know, for those of you who don't know, I act as kind of the master developer, working with the existing owner, to set up the game board. And then I bring in other development players to come and build under the zoning and all the land use policy that we all work together to put in place. So we've started to kind of list out who those players could be, both locally and nationally, and talking about the merits of each one and who would want to be here and why. And we've actually already started some of those conversations this early in the, in the, in the game. Because, you know, part of this is to create a highly investable environment, but also an environment where people are willing to come in and invest quickly and build quickly, but are also willing to do it under the rules that we all set up together, right? So our community engagement process is this crowdsourced placemaking process. And crowdsourcing, you know, as I've explained to the council before and the mayor's office and the community that I've met with so far, is a very interactive process. So it's not a kind of charrette that happens for a day and everybody kind of talks about ideas and then, you know, the developer goes off and does, you know, kind of something else, basically. This is a very iterative process. And we're really looking to get people to focus mostly on the uses they want to see on the future Severance Town Center, right? What are the uses that we think we need in Cleveland Heights? Whether those be retail, recreational, residential, commercial, whatever those uses may be, entertainment, right? What are the uses that the community believes is needed in Cleveland Heights? And what are the uses that would be appropriate out of those uses for Severance Town Center? And figuring out then, what is the feasibility of those ideas, right? So it's one thing to have an idea and to say, hey, we really need, you know, a bowling alley, right? It's another thing to figure out whether a bowling alley is actually a financially feasible thing to do these days, right? Or where it is and why it is, right? Whatever the idea may be, right? So we're trying to make sure that any ideas that come up both show support from other community members and have financial feasibility, right? So putting those two pieces of the equation together are essential to making sure that we have a successful redevelopment of Severance Town Center. So as part of that process, we just recently launched our severanceclevelandheights.com website, which is a website about the project. So it has like kind of basic information about the project. You can download the RAP that I talked about. You can like kind of learn a little bit about us. You can learn about our relationship with NAMDAR, how that whole thing works. But more importantly than any of that, in my opinion, is the ideas portion of the website. And we launched this right before the Noble meeting last month. And I, to be honest with you, hated the website that was created. It was created by a web developer that we knew in New York. And I did not like it at all. It was not functioning the way I liked it, wanted to function, the display was not good. So we actually hired this guy, Josh Tang, who is local here, to redo the whole thing, a Cleveland Heights person, to redo it. And just today, relaunched the website. So it's the same exact web address, so nobody gets lost. And anything that was posted on there before, we just moved over to this, this site. But I'm really excited about the new version of it. You can kind of see on the right-hand side of your screen, that's like the display of the ideas page. So you can, you know, kind of, you'll be able to sort ideas by whether they're residential ideas or commercial ideas or retail ideas, recreational ideas. You can post your idea. We ask you to post an idea and then a small, short description of that idea and then an image that represents what you're trying to bring forth or trying to recommend, right? And then other community members then like those ideas or vote, upvote those ideas. And we're going to have, you know, as part of this process moves forward, I'm going to be encouraging people to have campaigns for their ideas, to garner support from their fellow community members for their ideas. And over time, as ideas grow and grow support for them, ideas that rise to the top, we will look at the feasibility of those ideas. We will then be able to go out and talk to other entrepreneurs and/or other folks who own businesses like that about coming and providing that idea here, right? So I've done this process in multiple places and it's amazing what kind of momentum you can build from that process. And you can also have a real conversation about the feasibility of these ideas, right? So if someone posts an idea that's just not feasible, A, we can say, well, nobody else really liked your idea, right, from this process? And B, even if they liked your idea and we show that maybe it's not feasible, well, maybe we can do your idea in this way, right? We can shift the idea so it's something that is feasible, right? But it's a way for us to transparently work together on the future of uses for the Severance Town Center site. So please, join the website. Please tell people about it. Please post ideas. We make folks register, which like turns people off right away because they're like, I don't want to register and I just want to... But it's important to register because we want this to be like a process that's ongoing, collaborative. And we don't want people to just like lob things in there and not participate, right? We also want to make sure that the people who are participating in this effort are, to the best of our ability, without making people like show an ID, have some stake in Cleveland Heights, right? So in order to do so, there's like a dropdown menu, like what's your stake in Cleveland Heights, right? Are you a resident? Are you someone who works in Cleveland Heights, right? Because hopefully, the majority of people that post ideas here are not from California, right? We want people local as much as possible. So the registration process is a way in which we control that to some extent to make sure that it's as local as possible. But we're also not trying to make it too difficult for people to get involved, right? So, you know, whenever anybody, you know, gives you a hard time about having to register, please explain that to them. So we'll be pushing this out really hard in the next couple of weeks. Okay, concept planning. So this meeting's not going to be able to do this probably justice. So we're going to have to have multiple meetings about this, but I'm going to get into it really quickly, a little bit, without boring people about some of the things that we've been doing. So if you recall, in our partnership with NAMDAR, we agreed that we would focus kind of on the east side of the site. So the side of the site... of the site where the former Regal and the Walmart were, to start, right? So I, we call that kind of the phase one side of the site, right? With the other areas being multiple, several subsequent phases. So when we started kind of, a couple of months ago, we started kind of just mapping out that side of the site where the Walmart is, and kind of where it meets right here where City Hall is, right? In that frontage area. So this was some initial concepts we had of how buildings could be laid out. A lot of it is like, looking at the financial feasibility of parking, right? Parking is a very expensive thing. So like, how do we park the initial phases? Well, we wanted this to be a good walkable area, so we don't want to have surface parking on the streets. But we also know that it's going to be challenging to build structured parking in the beginning, right? So you try to create surface parking that's hidden in the beginning while, to make it financially feasible, but also, you know, over time, move towards a structured parking solution, right, for the site. And that's kind of how we usually approach these types of things. You know, how does the buildings address the Ring Road? How does the Ring Road have a future network of road networks? How does it, how do we like, create a real entrance at Mayfield? So we started thinking about some of those initial things. And now, this is kind of where we've gotten to so far. This probably doesn't mean a whole lot to folks, real quickly, but this is a layout of mixed-use buildings, right? So this is a layout of buildings that have a mix of residential, retail, some hotel, and commercial spaces. So can I walk away from the mic and keep talking? I'm pretty loud. No? Okay. This guy. Green light's on. Green light's on. Is this working?
Yes.
I like to walk, so thank you. All right. So there are challenges that we have, like you have with every site, right? So starting on kind of this Walmart movie theater side of the site, there's some grade issues going on. So you know, when you go to like, the movie theater, it's like, well below where the Walmart is, right? So grading and site work is a very expensive thing. Grading dirt, moving dirt, and all that kind of stuff is very challenging. One of the things that we're trying to do is see how we can work with the existing grading of the site from a phasing perspective, right? So you kind of think of like, everything, this line right here, everything to the north side of that has a much lower grade that we can start with. Everything southeast of that is a higher grade. Also, the, you know, the cost of demolition in those buildings is something that we're considering as part of it, right? We're also thinking about what's going to happen up on Mayfield Road. So currently, NAMDAR owns where this green patch is, but the city owns a piece of land next to that. So I'm proposing, very early, but I'm saying we should swap the land, right, and create the bigger piece of land that NAMDAR owns as like, kind of a park system, and the smaller piece of land that the city owns as a building, right? So that we have, this is a more natural area right here. I don't know if everybody knows this wooded area along Mayfield Road, right? There's been talk about a hotel, like, a lot of people have been talking about, wow, we really need a hotel in this area. I know, because I stay downtown every time. But, you know, we're going to have to look really deep into hotel demand. But one of the things is that we thought about is if you're going to have a branded or a flagged hotel, it really needs visibility, right? So we've thought about kind of this corner site, if we could ever make a deal, if we could try to make a deal with where the dentist is, right, as a good location for a potential hospital. And it gives you like, a real, those are some of the things that we think. As far as kind of like, the initial phase goes, this initial phase would be a mix of for-sale, for-sale housing, townhomes. We would have market rate rentals and affordable rent. All of the above is kind of what we're looking at, with a mix of uses of ground floor retail and commercial spaces, right? So, you know, I've been talking to some players about this block, A, B, and C buildings being one phase, right? But trying to do that at the same time as buildings D, E, and F, and maybe even building G. H is the hotel, which might come later, right? So this whole area is something that I really want to attack right away. It might be three different development firms doing three different typologies, right? But they will be non-competing, right? Because they'd be different types of users, right? But if we can get kind of two or three of these things going at once, we can really create a place on both sides of the Ring Road to start, right? Because you got, really need to create both sides of the street. And that's part of what our zoning is going to talk about, is how the street and the sidewalk interact with the public realm and the private realm, right? And one of the things that we're going to be doing soon is starting to write the zoning code. So, you know, those are some early things. And then we thought about, okay, if we build, start working our way southeast on the site, eventually, you know, the natural progression could be to put, you know, future phases and phase two down here. But we really want to come back up here and start really connecting to City Hall and creating a boulevard here, right? So that we have this natural downtown feel of a boulevard, like a walkable area with parking in the middle, and, and, you know, retail. So everything that has these red bars on it would have retail on the ground floor of it. Does that make sense to folks? Have you seen that? Dave's Grocery is here. I've been talking to the Saltzman. So that conversation about like, at what point do we have enough density on the site to justify them to move into a new building, right? So that we can kind of put them in a new building and make them part of a development. We've been talking to SAG and a lot of those folks. I'm meeting with them tomorrow about like, park systems and how parks are sited, and when those, those, those parks come to fruition. Yeah. So that's just some of, this is a private site over here, right? We've been talking to the owner of this site. I actually, this red boundary here, everybody see the big red boundary around the whole thing? That's actually the zoning boundary. So when we write the zoning code, we're going to write a zoning code that includes this, everything inside this red boundary. So it'll be optional. So somebody who owns this private site over here, they can stick with their existing zoning, right? Or they can opt into the new zoning, right? Which will have advantages and things that they're going to have to pay into, right? So that's like, a really rough, quick overview. But, you know, it's something for now to talk about. And this is just the beginning of the process, obviously. This is like, this is another, the same diagram, but it has the mini phases in it. I don't think we need to dive into this. This is like, the initial road network, right? So what's really important to us to create good zoning is to create a good road network, right? So to understanding how what is now just a giant circle will become an integrated network of roads and pedestrian pathways over time, right? And this is just the beginning of that, right? So, you know, you obviously don't have to circulate the entire Severance Circle to get from one side to the other, right? You can cut through in certain areas. And this is how we create our development blocks, right? And our blocks lead into our zoning code. Certain areas will be, will look to require kind of retail space. Certain areas will look to require storefront glass, so it feels very walkable. Certain areas may be just residential in nature, right, and quieter, right? And the zoning will drive a lot of that stuff. All right. Where we are. So we kind of finished the first half of the process with the rap. We just started the second half of the process, and we're in that first box of creating this conceptual site planning stuff. So we're going to be kind of refining that and getting socializing that and getting feedback on that. What is on that plan does not mean that's what's going to get built. So to be very clear, right? We create these conceptual plans, we create them so that we know a approximate bulk density, right, that we're trying to target over a 25-year period, right? But plus, probably, right? But every time someone goes to build a building, they will do their own engineering, they will do their own plan, but it will have to adhere to the zoning code rules that we put in place, right? So every building that I have up on that plan is not going to look like that, be sited exactly like that, right? It is how we drive where the road network's going to be, and how the zoning code is written, right? Then each individual building will still have its own design process, right? But we're going to create an expedited process so that people can get in the ground. So create the site plan, then we're going to work through the impacts of that plan, stakeholder reviews that are all happening over the next couple of months, plan revisions, then we start drafting the code. And all of this, we're trying to get done by the end of this year. So it's ambitious, but it's doable, and it's what I came to do. So we're, we're on time right now, but we're really getting into the hard part of this whole process. So it's going to be fun. I'm excited for the ride. That was a ton of information, but hopefully, that was succinct enough.
Oh, yeah.
And I'll stop for questions.
Oh, it's a lot of balls in the air. Questions from council or comments?
Well, Ryan, thanks for presenting this. And I want to thank you for keeping us individually up to speed on your process. It gives me, for example, just a real sense of just goodwill that you're spending here. I see all the time in the stone oven, meeting with someone. I know it's one of your probably many meeting spots. I see you talking to people in the community. You come up with deliverables like this that seem really realistic. Boy, I just hope it all works out in the end. And thanks, thanks to you and your people.
Yeah, no, appreciate it. I mean, the community's been extremely collaborative, so it wouldn't work without that. So.
You had a heck of a crowd at Noble Library last month. Are you doing something like that this month?
I think the next big one might actually be a collab with Future Heights again.
Okay.
So we might be doing a crowdsourced in June, is what we've been talking about. And I think the next couple of months, I'm going to do a lot of smaller meetings until that one.
Okay. Councilman Cobb?
Sure. And I guess I could have jumped on the website real quick. What we just went through these slides, I see that they're up on your website. Is that right?
The rap is on the website right now. All the plan slides are not yet on the website. Yeah.
Are you planning on posting?
Eventually. I mean, we've got a lot of detail. So I literally got these last week while I was on vacation. So I haven't even really dug into it yet. And I'm excited. We're meeting with the SAG folks tomorrow, and Paul's going to be there, you know, so there's a lot of work to do. But yes, eventually, yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Well, again, thank you so much. It's always very informative. It really shows how complicated this is, but you, I think, presented it in a way that, you know, I think we can all appreciate and understand.
All right. Thank you.
Good. Look forward to seeing you again. All right. Next on the agenda is communications from the mayor.
Thank you. I don't really have much to say today, but I did, I did want to take just a moment. This isn't really our city business. But I did recently go to the AMA Conference, the African-American Mayors Association Conference. And I just wanted to take a moment to celebrate and congratulate and thank my assistant mayor, Kim Thomas, for being named one of our Board of Trustees. Just wanted to take a moment and, and give her some flowers for that. And also thank her for serving in that capacity. So I just wanted to take a moment there. And with that, yield back. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Next, we have the report from, of the clerk of council.
Just to notify council, that a notice from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control has been received for the transfer of a D2, D2X, D3, D3A, D6 liquor permit from YLT Heights LLC, doing business as Nighttown, to Edwin's Leadership and Restaurant Institute. This matter's been referred to the mayor and chief of police.
All right. Thank you, Addie. Next, we have public comment.
I have one for legislative agenda item, and that is Drew Herzig.
Drew Herzig, Bradford Road, Cleveland Heights. Counselors, Mr. Mayor, I want to speak to two of the resolutions before you tonight. But first of all, I would really like to ask you to look at your agenda and maybe put public comment ahead of presentations. Members of the public have been here since 7:30 waiting to speak to you, and it would be more considerate of their time if you had these lengthy presentations after we have a chance to address you. Thank you for considering that. One resolution in front of you is one opposing the federal government's cutting of assistance to food banks and food resources here. Absolutely, they would rather food rot in warehouses than feed hungry people. It's unimaginable, the cruelty that they are enacting. I would like the city to be a little bit more proactive, though. For one thing, on the city website, you could list local food pantries and food distribution centers, so that members of the public who need that information can find it at the city. So why not do that? Also, why is there no senior lunch program at the senior center? There is a local Meals on Wheels. They could deliver meals to the senior center, and seniors could sign up for that. Possibly, the city could provide free or partially funded meals to seniors who might qualification. So why shouldn't the city be offering Meals on Wheels at the senior center? That's another area where the city can be proactive in that. This is going to be such a pervasive problem that I think we need to look at every possibility that we can assist people who are experiencing, I hate the term food insecurity, who are going hungry, who are hungry and are not sure where their next meal will be coming from. So let's be more proactive on that. The other resolution is the resolution observing May as Mental Health Awareness Month. As a person who lives with mental illness, I am aware of how pervasive and toxic the stigma still attached with mental illness is. So anything we can do to move the needle on making mental illness and mental health part of the community conversation constantly so that we can wear it away at that stigma and make it something that people live with and people function with. It's nothing to be ashamed of, but it is still something to be ashamed of. Very few people are willing to come forward and speak about that. So I feel I don't have much to lose, but as a person living with mental illness, I used to joke that it's easier to coming out as a member of the LGBTQ plus community than it's coming out somebody living with mental illness. But the federal government is trying to level the playing field on that. It's becoming extremely dangerous to come out as a person, a trans person or a queer person. So this is all going to hell in a handbasket, and we need to stand against that. So please, anything you can do to promote mental health, to reduce the stigma associated with mental illness would be good. I'm going to combine those two elements in a slightly off-topic thing. The graffiti at the Rainbow Crosswalk at Cedar and Superior has still, I'm sorry, Taylor and Superior, has still not been dealt with. That's unacceptable. If that were a swastika on a synagogue, or a noose hanging from a tree at a school, it would have been dealt with immediately. But because it's affecting the LGBTQ plus community, apparently, public works thinks it's not a priority. That's the sort of soft homophobia that's been given a free pass up to this point, but it's not accessible. That needs to be remediated. It needs to be done immediately. We can't wait until June for you to fix the graffiti that is disfiguring the Rainbow Crosswalk at Superior and Taylor. Thank you.
For non-legislative items, we have Tom Hudak.
Tom Hudak, Bradford Road. In 2019, the citizens of Cleveland Heights voted overwhelmingly for an elected mayor form of government, 7,005 to 3,906. The losing side of that vote was comprised in part of an old guard that liked the city government they could control. A couple of years after that vote, I met one of those members of that old guard at a party where, to hear him tell it, the voluntary No Mo May campaign was nothing less than a second Bolshevik revolution. Now, this old guard is still fighting for their lost cause, and using this city council and their friends in the media to do so. I mean, what else could account for media stories like the following running unfact-checked, in an election year, of course? Stories like the one involving a voter who blames a mayor elected in 2021 for the removal of a guardrail two decades ago. Or the story about a Kane Park manager who dared, dared to lose his temper when he found out that an employee was charging concessions to her personal Venmo account. And let's not forget the prominent man who was once Akron's mayor, alleging he was the victim of hostility by the mayor's wife. Misogyny, hubris, take your pick. Finally, there's the rumor and innuendo spread by the president and vice president of this council that some city hall employees have told them they too face a hostile work environment. Now, if the president and vice president were employees of City Hall, they would be in violation of the ethics of, they would be in violation of the ethics in the city's employee handbook. Maybe President Kuta and Vice President Russell know that employees are just telling them what they want to hear. Maybe the truth is that a few city employees used to our previous form of government find it hostile when the new government expects them to have a higher degree of professionalism. Because under our new form of government with an elected mayor, Cleveland Heights is finally, finally on the move again with new infrastructure, retail, and housing developments. These developments will attract a new generation of professionals, professionals who will want a professional city hall, not one run by an old guard claiming expertise when they have none. This old guard wants to gain back their right to run things behind a city council more interested in smoke and mirrors than contributing to the city's growth. For a better future for Cleveland Heights, we can't allow that. Thank you.
Erin Brunetta Espoila.
Hello, council. My name is Erin Brunetta Espoila. I live on Westminster Road. I'm here with Rashawn Grimes, also a Cleveland Heights resident. We just wanted to take the opportunity to thank you, to the city, the mayor, and the police. Sergeant Skok has worked with us on behalf of the Heights Tiger 5K. This is a great community event that benefits all seven of our elementary schools and that benefits all seven of our elementary schools, and it is just such a fun day. It's coming up on March 7th -- I'm sorry, May 17th, where we have our 5K beginning at 9:00 AM. It's a great footrace that starts at the high school, and then we run throughout the city, near Kane Park, and then finish back at the track. We've got our fourth year this year for this race. And every year, it keeps growing and growing. We have about 400 participants from last year that we're hoping to surpass. We've had about 15 sponsors in previous years, and this year, we're already at 25. So if you know anyone who would like to sponsor such a great community event, please feel free to have them reach out. We also want to open the floor. If there's a nonprofit here tonight, we do offer a table at the event. So if you're a nonprofit, you can come coordinate with us and whatever you would like to do, pass out literature, engage with the kids, et cetera. One thing that's so great about this is that we serve ice cream for breakfast. We have Heights High alum Mitchell's Ice Cream signed onto this every year. And so after they finish the 5K, they do get their ice cream. And Vershaun is going to tell you a little bit about what the funds raised benefit.
So previously, we had one run club at one of the seven elementary schools. Now we're at a total of four run clubs this year. So eventually, we want to get to all seven schools to participate. With the run clubs, we practice, we tell them great eating habits, how to run, to prepare them for the actual run the day of the race. Previously, we were able to provide $1,500 to each school, so we're looking to surpass that. And then those funds are provided -- the PTA uses those funds for like ice cream socials, trunk-or-treat, end-of-year festivities, field days, after-school enrichments, things like that, that the PTA puts on for each school.
So it's a great event. Again, if you would like to come out, participate, we've had members of the council there in previous years. So thank you all for your participation. Yeah?
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Just a quick question. I know you mentioned the four groups. Could you just shout out where they are, who they are, where they are?
Definitely. Yeah, we've got Oxford, run by Vershaun here. Noble Run Club, Ms. Lauren Gaines is a teacher there, an intervention specialist, and she has continued to grow her program. And then we've got Canterbury and Garrity. So yeah, it's about 100 kids from Run Club that culminate at the 5K. So it's really a cool thing.
Thank you so much. I loved it. And I just wanted to give them a shout out because it's just crazy, the work that you guys are doing. But thank you so much.
Yeah, no, we really appreciate it. And we understand that maybe council is considering appropriating funds to our event, and we really appreciate that consideration. So.
And again, the grading, eating habits, and the ice cream for breakfast.
You know, you got to lure them in a little bit, right?
Their tea day.
Yeah. And it's like Mitchell's healthy style. So it's good.
I had to do that. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you so much. All right. What do we have?
That's all.
Oh, wow. Okay. All right. So we're on to legislation, first readings, consideration for adoption.
First, I have Resolution Number 056-2025 on first reading. A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Sosec Painting and Remodeling LLC, a certified lead abatement contractor for the use of Lead Safe Ohio grant funds in connection with the abatement of lead-based paint hazards at permanent parcel number 684-18-034, providing compensation therefore and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure. Introduced by Mayor Sarin.
So moved.
Second.
Second. It's been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Next, I have Resolution Number 057-2025 on first reading. A resolution opposing federal and state cuts to food assistance programs that directly impact the Greater Cleveland Food Bank and its partners, and urging the restoration of these funds to support families in need across Greater Cleveland and Cleveland Heights, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure. Introduced by council member Petrus.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any discussion?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I just want to thank Councilman Petrus for bringing this up and shedding light on this. I can't express to you the amount of organizations, from churches to nonprofits, across this county who have been impacted by these resources being pulled back. The day that we found out those trucks were being shifted, immediately nonprofits across the city had to make adjustments for that. And so along with this legislation, I want to shout out the individuals. I want to shout out our residents, our organizations who stepped in to fill in the gap, our restaurants, to help continue to push this through. In many cases, and I say us, my church in East Cleveland, we didn't see this coming. We had planned for food, they just never showed up. And the folks are still waiting, and they're preparing for this. And so if anyone wants to know if this is a very real issue, it is. We plan in advance, in many cases, in six months, to make sure that we have enough for families and for emergencies. For many of us, we're about to run out. It's gone. It's completely gone. So as you see the need going up, and it's rising across our city, we're seeing the resources decreasing at the same time that need is increasing. And so please know that your local faith organizations, your local nonprofits and groups, what you're doing to help support and lift up anyone who is helping to feed folks is a true blessing right now. We have no idea where resources are coming from, week by week. Right now, there are restaurants across the Clevelanders who are saying, hey, I want to do what I can. What can we do just to hold this up? And so this is a very, very real issue that's affecting families here in Cleveland Heights and across this county and across the country. And so just please be aware of that. But thank you to everyone who really leans in and supports this work. This is a real emergency in this community. Thank you.
Any other comments? Yeah, I would just say, this is, it would be wonderful if, you know, this Republicans, Democrats, independents, we could all just gather around some issue like this. I mean, we don't have to be at odds about everything. I think this is something that we certainly could come together on.
Mr. President?
Yeah.
One brief comment. Remember a while back when this council and the school board and the library board and the University Heights Council would get together and have its joint board meetings? One of the things that was discussed was a collaborative effort to create sort of a benefits directory that people could be pointed to. And Mr. Herzig's point is very well made, that that's one of the things that we could be a little bit more proactive about in pointing people toward those resources that are there, especially right now when resources are being removed. I don't know exactly where the councils and the boards got on sort of that, the creation of that, yeah, I don't know, collaborative service to the community. But maybe that's something that we could discuss picking back up to provide that kind of direction to people who are in need right now.
You know, I'm glad you brought that up because I have asked some of the other entities about getting together, and there was not an appetite for that, no pun intended. But I would like to, you know, now I'm inspired to follow up again. Go ahead.
Just to go along with that, I do want to shout out the Cleveland Heights, University Heights Library and East Cleveland's library system, because this is something they've continued to share, is that where to get those meals from, where to get that information from as well. And so if you go to those libraries, they do have that information. They've done an exceptional job of showing where those pantries are. And one of the things, as they were taking the lead on this, is really adding to that and really spreading that information throughout the city is one of those conversations that they wanted to have. But if you go to our local libraries, they do have resources on that, everything from churches to food banks. And along with that, we're going to start adding in locations for many of our food boxes, which I've noticed that a lot of our nonprofits, even some residences, have transformed their book boxes into food boxes in their own neighborhoods. Please know that is going, that's not going unnoticed, and it's a blessing to your neighbors. If you're wondering if people will use those, one of the things that I've looked for, Cleveland Heights residents at night, is many family members don't go to those boxes until 10:00 or 11:00 or 12:00 o'clock at night when they don't think anyone is going to see them. So please know that that food is being taken, is being used. You just may not see people there during the day. But people are facing very difficult times, and especially our seniors. We think about large-scale families, but our seniors here are taking a massive hit as well. They're already trying to take cuts to their grocery bills, and you see them lined up in these centers to get these resources. So that's something we also want to work at, making sure that we do that in the community center as well.
Thank you. And thank you, Councilman Petrus. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Next, I have Resolution Number 058-2025 on first reading. A resolution authorizing participation in the ODOT Cooperative Purchasing Program for Road Salt for the 2025-2026 winter season, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure. Introduced by Mayor Sarin.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Next, I have Resolution Number 059-2025 on first reading. A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with GPD Group for Engineering Design Services Associated with the Waterline Replacement Project on Altamont Road, providing compensation therefore and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure. Introduced by Mayor Sarin.
So moved. Second.
All right. It's been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Next, I have Resolution Number 060-2025 on first reading. A resolution acknowledging receipt from the Cedar Fairmount Special Improvement District of a Plan for Public Services and Improvements, and returning said plan to the Board of Directors without comments or recommendations for changes, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure. Introduced by Mayor Sarin.
So moved. Sorry, I thought the mic was on. Second.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Next, I have Resolution Number 061-2025 on first reading. A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an extension to a professional services agreement with Online Solutions LLC Citizen Serve, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure. Introduced by Mayor Sarin.
So moved. Second.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. First readings only?
I have Ordinance Number 062-2025 on first reading. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute 16 real estate purchase agreements for the sale of certain residential real property located within the city to various purchasers, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure. Introduced by Mayor Sarin.
And I'm going to refer that to Planning and Development, which is meeting this Wednesday at 10:30.
Next, I have Ordinance Number 063-2025 on first reading. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a real estate purchase agreement for the sale of certain vacant real property located on South Overlook Road and Cedar Road, consisting of approximately 0.54 acres, and identified as permanent parcel numbers 685-24-001 and 6825 -- or 24, 685-24-033 in the Cuyahoga County records, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure. Introduced by Mayor Sarin.
And this will also be referred to Planning and Development. Second readings?
I have Ordinance Number 023-2025 on second reading. An ordinance establishing salary schedules, position classifications, and other compensation and benefits for officers and employees of the city, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure. Introduced by Mayor Sarin.
All right. Councilman Cobb?
Yes, Mr. President. I would like to move to amend Ordinance 23-2025. I moved to amend that by substitution of the, or substitution for the draft labeled amended April 21st, 2025, for the version that we previously gave a first reading to.
So moved.
All right. A second. I'm sorry. A second, right. Okay. Any discussion on the substitution? Okay. Do we need a roll call on this? No, I don't want. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes. You gonna read the legislation now? Oh, we vote on the legislation.
No.
But where are we now? Help me.
I read the legislation.
Oh, right.
Have now amended.
So now it's, now we have the amendment in place. Okay. Any discussion on the legislation itself?
You don't have a motion yet on the legislation itself. So you amended it. If you're looking to do, take action with it tonight, you would need a motion to adopt.
All right. If there's any, so would we need to do that before we discuss whether or not we want to move forward on it?
That's the proper.
Okay. Go ahead. You can, you can make your motion.
Yeah, I was going to make a motion if we go ahead and approve it and have the discussion so we can.
And is there a second?
I think there was, I think there was some discussion or hesitation about whether we wanted to vote on this tonight versus having an additional reading.
We are. I'm going to make that.
Okay.
Madam Vice President, would you like to say something?
Are you at the discussion level?
Yeah, we're at.
No, you're not.
No, was that a second? But Cobb?
I'll do the second for us to have the discussion that I just started.
Thank you. Now you're in discussion.
Discussion, Madam Vice President.
Thank you. I would like to move this legislation for a third reading so we can take care of some amendment items in this legislation.
Everybody okay with that?
I completely support that.
Everybody? All right. So Addie, that's what we're going to do. We're not going to vote, and we'll put it on for third reading for May 5th. You look, you look a little nervous. Go ahead.
Withdrawal of the motion to adopt.
Thank you. I was going to say.
You did the motion, Anthony.
I'd like to make a motion to withdraw from passing this legislation this evening.
Do we have a second?
You don't need to make a motion. You just withdraw your motion.
Sweet baby Jesus. Okay, all righty.
All right. Oh, that was a lot of work. All right. So Addie, where are we at now? Consent agenda.
Sorry, guys. Little drama there for you. Okay, so consent agenda. I have quite a few, so buckle up. I've got Resolution Number 064-2025 on first reading. A resolution declaring May 2025 National Preservation Month, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure. Introduced by Mayor Sarin. I have Resolution Number 065-2025 on first reading. A resolution recognizing May 5th through May 9th, 2025, as Air Quality Awareness Week, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure. Introduced by Mayor Sarin. I have Resolution Number 066-2025 on first reading. A resolution proclaiming May 2025 to be Mary Dunbar Bike Month in the city of Cleveland Heights, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure. Introduced by all city council members. I have Resolution Number 067-2025 on first reading. A resolution recognizing April 22nd, 2025, as National School Bus Driver Appreciation Day, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure. Introduced by all city council members. I have Resolution Number 068-2025 on first reading. A resolution proclaiming May 2025 as Jewish American Heritage Month, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure. Introduced by all city council members. I have Resolution Number 069-2025 on first reading. A resolution recognizing May 2025 to be Mental Health Awareness Month, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure. Introduced by all city council members. Finally, I have Resolution Number 070-2025 on first reading. A resolution recognizing May 4th through May 10th, 2025, to be Professional Municipal Clerks Week, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure. Introduced by all city council members.
All right. Do I have a motion to suspend the rolls?
So moved.
Second.
All right. It's been moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now let's move for adoption.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any discussion here? Or comments? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Those motions are now all adopted. We're on to committee reports. Who has a committee report? Counselor Larson.
Thank you, President Kuta. The Finance Committee will be meeting April 28 at 6:00 PM. The agenda will include discussion of the January and February 2025 financial reports. Director Hairston has indicated those reports will be available for this meeting. We will also discuss with Director Hairston his preferred monthly financial reporting formats, given the archaic report writing on the current accounting software. We'll also hear from Finance Committee Vice Chair Maddox on lending programs available to our predominantly African-American neighborhoods for purchasing and or repairing properties. Frank Ford will be joining us at the May meeting to discuss the requested analysis of lending practices in Cleveland Heights' predominantly African-American neighborhoods. Council continues to wait for the Finance Director's certification that funds are available for council's 2025 budget requests, which include the council internship program, a composting pilot program, requests for additional funding for street resurfacing, and funding support for the Heights Tiger 5K, the Fun Run, the Happy 5K, and the Music Hop. Tonight, at Cleveland Committee of the Whole, Mayor Sarin did indicate how we may move our requests forward. I have done that with the composting program. Council is also waiting for the results of the long-overdue state audit of the 2023 financial statements, and additionally, the fourth quarter 2024 financial statements are not yet posted on the city's website. Municipal Services and Environmental Sustainability, I'll be attending the April 30th, 6:45 meeting of Transportation and Environmental Sustainability Committee. The committee will be discussing the original Complete and Green Streets legislation and possible amendments to strengthen Resolution 37-2018. And I'll be attending the next Climate, Environmental, Sustainability Committee meeting on May 20. on May 20th at 2:00 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Cobb?
Yes, I'm going to have an agenda meeting this coming Monday, the 28th, I believe it's at 4:30 p.m. I'll have an agenda posted by Wednesday morning.
Very good.
Councilman Cobb? Administrative Services meeting?
Yes.
Said agenda meeting, I just want to make sure.
I'm sorry, Administrative Services Committee. I'll let.
Councilman Petrus, did you want to announce your meeting? Your committee meeting?
Thank you. We had a public hearing scheduled for tomorrow because I have been out of town for a family situation that has been rescheduled for Wednesday, May 7th, at 6:00 p.m. in council chambers.
And thank you, Councilman. Councilman Posh?
We have two Public Safety and Health Committee meetings, one tomorrow evening that involves the members of the committee to go over a plan for our public hearing the following week. And that public hearing is about our dear population. We have representatives from the Metro Parks and Ohio, and the Ohio Department of National Resources. They will be joining us to discuss our dear population. I expect the first half will be spent on presentations, and the second half will be devoted to public comment. We are looking for short comments in, in the area of two to three minutes each. The public hearing is next week. It's Tuesday, it's in these chambers. The timeframe is between 6:00 and 8:00 o'clock. Our Public Safety and Health Committee meeting tomorrow night is to sort of discuss the planning for that event, and also continuing our conversations about a public satisfaction survey.
Very good. Council Vice President?
Thank you, President Kuta. Wednesday, April 23rd, 10:30 a.m. will be a Planning and Development Committee meeting. As you heard earlier, that President Kuta has referred to pieces of legislation to my committee. This, apart from that, we will be having our continued developers' meeting, and we will have a presentation from South Euclid Department of Planning and Development as well. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. We're on to old business. Hearing, uh, new business. Hearing, uh, council member comments. Yeah, new business.
Business. Since we're talking about food hunger and things that are happening in our community, I've partnered with Armani Church, who is actually opening up a minor's manor to take care of women and children in Cleveland Heights. We have over 100 homeless children in Cleveland Heights in our school system, as well as mothers. And I'm going to be asking the council to be able to donate to that project and give some funds. They were able to secure $500,000 from the county to start the program. They're ready to break ground, and I would like to be able to come to council and you all to discuss maybe donating or giving $100,000 to them as well to help them out, since we're talking about hunger and feeding families and children, but it's basically about women and children. So thank you very much. Something very nice that's coming to Cleveland Heights that's going to help house and feed children. I've been bringing a lot of resources to that organization for chefs, people where they can plant their own gardens and all kinds of different things. So I'm very excited for that to open up and to serve our community. Hopefully, we'll start breaking ground in June. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Russell. Any other council comments? All right. I don't have a.
That was new business.
Oh, that was new business, I'm sorry. Council comments? Thank you. All right. Hearing. Go ahead, Council.
I, I was supposed to do this a couple of weeks ago, and I just wanted to apologize. We, there's been a lot going on, but I wanted to make sure that I honored an amazing educator in Cleveland Heights, University Heights School District that recently passed away. She was a part of the Career Tech Program there, and ushering in students, part of her responsibility was touring them to local colleges and making sure that they were visible and that they, they had options. Her name is Essence Mitchell. She was an amazing woman in our district. I had the opportunity to work with her both in, in my professional role as a council member and as a parent. She had my son as well in the class, and I can tell you the impact that she made across the children in our school district is immeasurable. The things that she was able to expose them to, the places that she brought them to, the time she got up at 4:00 and 5:00 in the morning to meet them at Heights to make sure that they were on those buses to have those experiences. The, the day before, or the day after she passed away, she was scheduled to take them on a, a field trip to her college so that they could see and walk through that campus. She just gave so much to our children, and so I wanted to make sure that I honored her